Okay, the board is reconvening from our closed session at 6:47. We apologize. So we are going to be standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Will Bree Smith please lead us in that pledge? Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to do roll call. Vice President Pizzotti.
Here.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Present.
Trustee Wong.
Present.
Trustee Benegas is not present today, and I too am present. Announcements of actions taken in closed session. Government Code Section 48918, Student Discipline, info received. Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, WSTA, SEA, and Management, information received. Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline, Dismissal Release, information received. And Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code 54956.8, Direction Provided. So now approval of the agenda. Are there any requests for amendments or changes to the agenda before it is approved?
Yes, I would like to make a change if we can take off Action Item N10. The approval of the Yolo County Children's Alliance Community Schools Liaison. And if we could take off Consent Item P4D, the contract for Yolo Food Bank. There's some additional details that we want to be able to provide to the board.
Okay. Are there any others? So seeing none may, or seeing that we have those, we'll go ahead and take care of that. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Pizzotti moves. Do you have a second?
A second.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Or I do say aye. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and move to Communications and Celebrations. We don't have any. I was like, alright. Student Board Members and Association Reports. We have Diego Martinez from Yolo High School in the house. Oh, you're gonna go ahead and give our student board report. Go ahead.
My name is Diego Martinez. I'm from Yolo High School, and I will be and I will be presenting the student member report. For Bridgeway Island, they are having monthly assemblies for kindergartners through 5th graders and quarterly assemblies for middle schoolers. And they're currently having a Characteristics of the Month event, and it is V, which means Values for Self and Others. And also PTO has hosted a movie night, which went very well. And also, they have recently been enjoying the Wellness Center, and they have been utilizing it very well. For Riverbank, they are preparing for their first school-wide career fair, and the students and the students have made one pagers for a career. And every class has a voice amplifier system and will be fully utilized next month. And they also want to thank the Facility Department for replacing the parking lights and updating them up to code. For Alcorn Village, they have started their parent English classes in conjunction with their adult education. And the students have been receiving their awards for this month for excellence in academics and citizenship. And parents have been coming every Friday to participate in Walk with Friends program to bring produce to them, and also an hour of zumba. For South Park, since students returned, they have had a fashion show, and they have also picked which they have also picked their fashion for the student, for the staff to dress up, for them to represent their best selves. For Stonegate, the kindergartners have been talking and teaching students about being kind, loving, and inclusive to all students. And they have also welcomed students back to school by having a grade grades band assemblies for all grades to review school rules and expectations. And they have also had a Saks state member work with select number of students. For Westmore's, they have been having weekly rallies, and also and also they are having a Dragon Code of Honors, which is about respecting self and others. And teachers selected students that have demonstrated the best characteristics of the month for rewards and certificates for the Friday's rally. And for Westfield, they have had their STEM programs for TK through 8, and also after-school programs and family nights. All thanks for, all thanks to Elizabeth Burkeholder. For Washington Unified Virtual Academy, 69% of the 6-8 students have been receiving academic rewards for the first semester. 27% are in honor roll, 90% are in high honor roll, 23% are in the principals list for 4.0 GPA. And they've also held their STEAM Day yesterday for Logo Robotics, and also Coding, Astronomy, and Digital Art. For Evergreen, Evergreen is a program for 7th through 9th graders. And it is a small learning environment, and they will also have the support for a green light go to help them out whenever they need it, during break and lunch. For Washington Adult School, they are preparing for a pre-apprenticeship construction training programs, and they'll be offered that. And for the Teamsters Unions, they are also offering students CPR and first aid training and certification, and OSHA training certificate, safety certificates, training to prepare students to join the workforce. For Yolo High School, they are continuing to build positive culture among all students and staff. And they will celebrate student achievements and efforts for improving attendance, academic performance, and behavior. And staff will continue to ensure the student's success. For River City, they have hosted their 8th grade family night. And for Washington Middle College, they have, they are currently enrolling students for 2024 and 2025. And they have also helped out River City with their 8th grade family night event. And they are informing the West Sacramento community about the amazing dual enrollment opportunities in the district. Thank you for being here and listening.
Good job. Thank you. So you are welcome to stay and participate, and if you like, vote and help out. Or you may leave if you prefer. Okay. Smart man. Thank you, thank you. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and go to our next, and yes, our CSEA report with President Gundara.
Alright, hold on. Is it on? Yeah. So good evening, President Coffey, Superintendent Hildreth, and trustees. I have to adjust my comments tonight, but I do wanna say, in regards to N19YCCA, I do not like the picture that's painted that CSCA is holding up these contract conversations and negotiations with the district and YCCA. We made it really clear, really clear to the district on March 8th, 2023, right here, that they have to negotiate everything with a third party that has effects, impacts, and effects on our workload. It's a violation of Article 26.1 and 26.3. To save everybody time and HR time of grievances, let's just sit down and negotiate. The last time we sat down was November 6th, and we never met again. My question is why? If some didn't like the way the meeting went, be a professional. Let's meet again. That's the way it goes. We don't always like the way the meetings go. As you see, I had an update tonight. I have no conversation, no response to the UC Davis and the Yolo Food Bank contract. It doesn't impede unclassified work. I don't have a problem with it. I only have to negotiate the impacts and effects of classified work. So again, since March 8th of 2023, the district got a cease and desist letter from CSCA. They've known we had to negotiate the impacts and effects of this third party and this agreement. And I'm sure later on down the line, we'll have to negotiate other contracts. So I just wanna make it really clear, again, I've said it every time I'm up here, we're in full support. I've said numerous times to Dr. Hildreth, we're in support of the vision to provide resources to our students. We're in full support of it. I just don't want the picture painted again that we are the ones holding up contract negotiations or negotiations for community schools, because we're not. The next thing I'd like to talk about is paraeducator classification. I have the last few board meetings going back from October. Four resignations, three resignations. One. Nobody left the district October 26th, and October 12th, two. That's 10 since October. What's going on? Why can't we retain paraeducator? It's not only a disservice to our students, it affects our teachers who are trying to build relationships with their coworkers in the classroom. And to get a new person, however often, it just, it impacts the student's education. So, I mean, it could be, you know, starting wage for paraeducators, 1635. All the way to, I know there's different classes of paraeducator, but 1635 is range 23 to 1894. Come April 1st, 2024, go work at McDonald's and make $20 an hour. Why would you work at Washington Unified? We need to do something to attract and retain the staff that is educating our students, and that also goes for food service. Food service falls in the same classification, range 23 of 1635. Again, we're not gonna be able to retain people, right? We all know, everything is going up. So we really need to look at that as a district, right? I mean, do we want to support and provide fair pay for our classified staff? Or do we want to continue to have revolving door of minimum wage employees and resignations? I guess that's what we need to ask ourselves. As far as negotiations, our next meeting is, or contract negotiations, our next meeting is February 13th. I will say, we got a new labor relations rep, I did, CSCA. So the two scheduled dates in January, we had to reschedule. So just so you guys know, that's why we didn't start in January. And then lastly, I would really like to give a shout out to Pharoah and Balji, Christina, the whole HR department. I know I've said it multiple times, but there's really been a 180 from, I'll just say even a year ago. There's, communication is there, the interaction is there. It's just a complete 180. And I would really, really like to thank Ms. Balji. I called her yesterday with a concern from a member, an important emergency concern, and within an hour, we worked it out, we got it figured out. So I would really like to thank her for just that professionalism and, and again, showing staff that you care, that you're more, HR's more than just come in and we're gonna have a talk. So I really wanna thank them. You guys have a good evening.
Alright, now with that, our WSTA report. President Doug.
He's pretty tall. He could have raised it up for me. But that's just how Daniel does Doug. Kidding, Daniel. Alright, good evening, President Coffey, Vice President Pizzotti, Clerk Kirby Gonzalez, Superintendent Hildreth, Cabinet, and the rest of the trustees. It's good to see you. What? Oh, and the trustee. Trustee Wong. I like her too. It's good to see you this evening. And I, once again, I will just say it's great to hear from our student board member. It's really great to hear all of our high schools represented in the student board report. And so I'm really glad to hear representative from Yolo. On that note, I am going to I'm going to beat a dead horse in saying that sometimes, not sometimes, all the time, I feel like Yolo is the most unheard and underserved school in our district. And it's maybe the most important school in our district. We talk about equity. This is the school where we reach the students who have had a hard time being reached at other sites. Yolo should be applying and getting waivers that the other schools have gotten so we can create unique and creative schedules to allow Yolo students to begin to look at pathways for careers. And we should have innovative programs for our Yolo students like we do at Washington Middle College, High School, and some other places so that we can serve all of our students in West Sacramento. I have been, and I don't know if this is true, but there's rumors through the grapevine that Yolo High School is looking to end their physical education program. If that is the case, if that is actually happening, what a disservice to those students. Is Yolo just gonna become a placeholder where students go when we don't wanna lose ADA? Our students at Yolo deserve more than that. And I think sometimes we need to go and look at their faces to remember that. Because these are our precious kids in West Sacramento. On another note, I've been talking, I've been speaking with the Cabinet, and I've been speaking with Ms. Stovall and Dr. Hildreth about creative resolutions for benefits, and I'm gonna come back to this, to healthcare. One of the things we've been discussing is our current relationship with Keenan and Associates. And understanding that relationship, do we have a relationship there because we contract with them in other areas, and so they're giving us kickbacks with health benefits? Or, sorry, a better deal, kickbacks is a dangerous word, a better deal on health benefits? I don't know the answer to that, but I will tell you that Keenan and Associates is a non-fiduciary, which means that they are not obligated to make the best deal for us all the time. It means that they get some of their money directly from healthcare companies. And so we don't know what happens behind closed doors, and in a time where our members are suffering, we need to make sure we're getting the best members. And I will remind you that this impacts our CSCA, our classified staff. This impacts our teachers, and it also impacts our administrators. So we need to make sure that we have the best health insurance because we do care about equity. And I'm gonna come back to benefits in a second. I want to talk a little bit about Washington Middle College High School. Like you, I celebrate Washington Middle College High School for an innovative look at how we track our students into professional growth and graduate education. However, I will tell you, and if any of you have visited Washington Middle, you might notice that the teachers are feeling underwater. They're overwhelmed, they have a large task in front of them, and much of their work is not covered by the current CBA because they're a charter program. So I will give you an example. They have far more preps than a teacher at the high school. There's no additional accountability for that or compensation. Our CBA indicates that if you have more than four preps, that you don't have to do adjunct duties, but because they're a charter, our Washington Middle High School students, Middle College High School students are doing adjunct duties because there's nobody else to do that work, and they're a small school. I am encouraging WUSD, and I'm not getting pushback, by the way. I've got a really good relationship with Dr. Hildreth and HR and the whole Cabinet. But I'm encouraging us to look at, prior to the renewal of the charter, look at an MOU for Washington Middle College High School so that we can house their work within our CBA at some point. It's not gonna happen right away, but we need language for them to understand their day, their schedule. As you know, they don't even get to participate in our PLs because their schedule does not allow them to do so. So what does it mean to get hired in WUSD as a Washington Middle College High School teacher versus a River City High School teacher? They are very different, and I urge you to take a look. Because we wanna keep those excellent teachers, and we wanna grow Washington Middle College High School. And we're not gonna be able to do that. Trust me, morale is really low there right now. We're not gonna be able to do that unless we look at this. So let's look at this together. Just briefly, I know we're looking at our SPED task force. I'm really looking forward to the SPED task force because we really need to be concerned about recruitment and retention of our SPED teachers. We have to look at things like caseload. We have to look at things like competitive salary for retention compared to our local districts and factors. We need to analyze the contracts that we farm out to other companies as opposed to hiring people internally. And we need to prepare for the inevitable inclusion that's going to happen. We're gonna be having more inclusions in our classrooms, and we need to know what that looks like and how we serve students best while retaining our teachers. So I, as we start the SPED task force, be prepared, like I'm gonna be, like, I just sounded like my daughter, like, totally. I'm gonna be giving you updates as the task force goes. You stop it, Mr. Pizzotti. Stop it. This is why I relate so well to Izzy, by the way, because I know how to talk. I just want a second. Listen. I wanna stand behind my CSCA colleagues in regards to community schools. Community schools are tough, right? It's supposed to be messy. It's supposed to be difficult. We are not gonna hear what our community partners need unless it's tough, because some of the folks in our communities that are in these schools, they, for good reason, they don't have a great deal of trust. So it's supposed to be messy. But our classified staff, which by the way, is probably the biggest connection to our families, our parents, and our students in our district, they have parallels in some of the work that we're talking about here. And they have the right to make sure that they are represented in that. And I just wanna say, I've heard the argument a lot, well, we don't wanna overtax them, we don't wanna overload them. This is work they shouldn't have to do. Well, guess what? If it's already part of their job description, you can hire somebody else that is also a counselor or an outreach specialist, because we have that under our system. We don't need to farm that out. Now, there's things that we need that they can't provide. There's tax support, there's immigration support, and those things we should be reaching out. But nobody should be pressuring our partners when they're trying to make sure that community schools represent them as a part of the community. And again, a connected part to our families and students. So this, I'm not speaking on behalf of myself, but we're gonna find, WSTA is gonna find herself in the same position at some point. And I don't want people harassing us because we're trying to represent our interests in the community to serve students. So I really appreciate you guys holding back tonight. I know it's, I'm gonna get some pressure from people for saying this, but I know it's challenging. But let's do this right. We have to have trust. We have to have this process work so that it can be robust and great. And if there's part of our community that doesn't trust the process, then the process will never work. So thank you for listening to that. I wanted to thank HR and the Cabinet for our negotiations process. They've started off great. We had, I mean, the first one was kind of like a no-brainer, but it worked with IBB, and it was good, and I heard great reports back. So we're looking forward to working on community schools. And then finally, the last thing I wanted to say as we go into negotiations and bargaining. I talked last board meeting a little bit about benefits and salary and compensation. And I said, this district likes to talk about equity and fairness. And how can we do that if our employees are taking the brunt of changes, increases in benefits? So what does equity and fairness mean in regards to benefits? What is WSTA's view of equity and fairness? Our view is that at least a member, and probably a member plus one, is considered whole, which means they're fully covered by health insurance, and I know it's costly. But teachers got into teaching because, not because we're competitive in salary with other professions, it's because we started with benefits. And another area of equity with benefits is that the district should carry a percentage instead of a flat rate. So when rates increase, we're all, as a community, sharing that burden. If not, we're not gonna be able to get more teachers, and we're not gonna be able to serve our students. And with that, good night. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much for this. And we are now going to go ahead and open this up for public comments. Do we have any? We have three? Oh. Are you coming back up? The kid in the front!
There was one other part I was bargaining terms to share. There was, sorry.
Oh, that's, we were wondering what that was on our screen.
So I
Okay, so take it back, take it back, rewind.
Wednesday morning, I heard back from a couple of you, and I really appreciate their response. Hopefully those of you that didn't take a chance to respond, at least read it. There was no obligation to respond, but at least that let me know that it was read. So those are the current costs versus last year. So on the right column, we have the 2023 rates. That document was shared, so if you're like, no, he's making it up, like you can click on it. Not that you think I would, but if you wanna like confirm, it is straight off from the district. Do you mind moving the cursor? So when you see increase to bums, that's bargaining unit members, okay? So anyone from WSTA here, as far as I'm concerned, are all bums because we're bargaining unit members. But that's the percentage increase. So, and then the cost next to it is how much the dollar and cents, did it go up for that plan from last year to this year? So I mean, I'll go over a couple, but it's pretty intuitive. I think we could figure it out. So the Kaiser HMO, if we're looking at that one, why does it go up infinite percent? Well, it was covered 100%, and now this year it's $139. So obviously, there's no way to percentage. That one's infinite. So the percentage is probably not accurate or helpful, but the dollar amount. If we keep looking at it, on Kaiser HMO, depending plus one, it went up 84%. It went up from $363 per paid period by the employee last year, and now it's $666. It went up 84%. So again, when healthcare costs go up 18%, that's the cost of the plan. Our costs, as President Net mentioned, go up even more because of the flat rate. But that's not equitable. I mentioned before the personal impact. Mine's gone up 500%. I'm on the Kaiser HDP, the high deductible plan. That's supposed to be the cheapest option for my wife and I. $61 last year, no problem. This year, it went up to $305. That's a $244 increase, okay? That's over $2,000 a year. My raise is gone. I'm losing money now for this whole year. Because even if we negotiate a nice salary increase, that obviously starts in the fall, but this continues the entire year. This is not just for me, it's for all our members. I'm fortunate. This is my sixth year, so I've been able to move down on the pay scale a little bit to afford those costs. But I'm truly debating, can I have kids? Can I afford a house? Can I stay in this district? Those are the thoughts that are on my mind, and I know I'm not alone. There's people that are first and second years. Again, they make a lot less than me, just the nature of the scale. Why should they stay here? I mean, it's a great climate. I appreciate that. But ultimately, the most important thing in their lives is themselves and their family, right? Climate's wonderful, but if they can't afford to survive, have kids, have a house, if those are the things they want, why would anyone stay here? We're not gonna be able to attract new teachers. We're not gonna be able to keep them, right? This is unacceptable. And again, I'm not harping in the past because this is a contract that we all agreed And again, I'm not harping in the past because this is a contract that we all agreed with. So it's nothing to do with what we agreed with. There's nothing wrong with the agreement we had. Obviously, it turns out that it wasn't equitable at all. And again, that's no one's fault. There's no way to predict this. But one thing I can predict with almost certainty that it's going to go up again next year. And it's going to go up again next year, and next year, and next year. And just increasing a flat rate by $100, $200, that's going to do absolutely nothing. So it must be an equitable one where costs are shared evenly. Whatever that percentage, that'll be reached through bargaining time. But that's what that said. If there's any other questions on it, I know I shared this. I can share it with anyone. That's not private information. It's not for the, or for WSTA to have. It's public information about the costs we're experiencing. And there's some healthcare plans that went up even more than mine. So that was it. Hopefully, that brought clarity. And for those of you I shared it with, or those that would like that to be explained, just reach out to me, and I can explain where those numbers are coming from or how the calculations were made versus percentage or overall costs. So I appreciate you taking the time to listen, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we are going to public comments, and I believe we have three?
Yeah, three. I think you need to read a statement. No?
You can read the names?
You don't read a statement first?
Oh, yeah, I do. Sorry. It's my second meeting. Public comment disclaimer. So at our regular board meeting held on February 9, 2023, the board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board and read into the record, but not read during the meeting. Members of the public may address the board on the topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know, the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topics to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the right of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. Our pleas recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy, and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it is important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. Now, with that being said.
We have Mr. Larry Langford, our first public comment.
Good evening. Welcome back from the holidays. I hope you all had a great Christmas and New Year celebration. Interesting listening to some of these people talking tonight about budget calls, if you will. You guys are considering or have already approved some out-of-state travel for some of the staff here. I find it odd that the state of California, the city of Sacramento, they've all pretty much eliminated out-of-state travel, so I'm not sure why we would allow that to happen. But anyway, it's been almost four years now since the beginning of COVID, and I know there was a lot of money dispersed to schools from state, federal government, and other areas. I don't recall, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, I don't recall hearing or seeing a detailed report for Washington Unified School District pertaining to any of the COVID money we received. So I'm asking for some answers, and I would like you to direct staff to reply to this within written format to you as well as to the public. I understand there were numerous programs in our district added because of COVID, and I'd also like to know how those programs affected our students and how our students performed through those. I know there were several programs like CARES, ESSR, one, two, maybe three. I don't know how many there were that gave money to schools and school districts. I heard that there was $50,000 given to each school campus. And I'd like to know how that money, if it is true, was spent here in Washington Unified School District. All the money from the district, I would like to see a detailed report of how and where those monies were spent, as well as how we received them, where they were spent. Oddly enough, I've heard, but I have not verified this, that there are two other districts within the Sacramento community, both districts larger than us, received over $300 million in COVID money. I heard they've used that money to put in a brand-new, state-of-the-art baseball softball fields at some schools, football fields and stadiums at other schools, built two brand-new Olympic-sized swimming pools, and there are endless upgrades for all of their athletic programs, including new uniforms, three new uniforms for every sporting team at every single level, freshman JV and varsity. So I would like to find out why. I know at our school district, some of our coaches are actually using their own money to buy some of the equipment they have to use. We have blue tape in our gymnasium that holds discs down during basketball games. I think that, you know, there's a lot of kids that are involved in athletics, and it keeps them in school. Our district doesn't seem to pay a lot of attention to the athletic programs within our school district. So I would like you guys to direct staff to get those answers to me or to you or to the public, general public, and I look forward to hearing back from everyone. Thank you very much.
Our second public comment is James Dawson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Superintendent Hildreth and staff. I'm here to expand upon what President Nepp just said about Yole High School. It's come to my attention that a certain district administrator, director of student services, has been telling people that our PE program will be eliminated after the conclusion of the school year. It has me deeply concerned. That would be a devastating loss to our program. And it would also be, if it's true, it would also be a devastating blow to the district's stated mission and goals, which the board approved, Yole High School and its student population. Yole has, you may already know this or may not. Yole has already been cut to the bone in previous downsizings. We are basically one-person departments, one-teacher departments. And we're only five teachers now. PE is a required subject. It is an opportunity to give our student population, you know, a quality education experience in their high school. And also, you know, high school students, all students are energetic by nature. They need energy-leading activities like PE and our recognized handball program provides. Since I'm a teacher, I did bring a prop, you know, like I was trying to say. This is totally counter to the stated goals of Washington Unified School District, with both the board-adopted strategic plan and our mission statement. It's all about equity, whole child health and safety, challenge and supported, opportunity and achievement for every student, readiness for life. So I'm very concerned about this. And I hope these weren't just, you know, very valuable words put on paper, but I hope that we're actually going to implement to fidelity our stated goals within the confines of our resources. Not here to name and shame. That's not my purpose. My purpose is to help you, inform you, in case you don't already know, and fix a problem. I suppose there's two possibilities. It could just be someone blowing off steam, you know, kind of going rogue, or, you know, which is bad enough. But it could also be a possibility that it is a plan somewhere out there to do that. I would urge you to investigate and take actions if that's necessary. I realize that resources are finite, and, you know, we're probably headed for difficult financial times. I think the solution, if cuts are going to be made district-wide, is to involve all the stakeholders and work within our constraints to make that happen as equitably as possible. And I thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate our president bringing that also to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last public comment is Stephen Weiss.
We have sort of than the three minutes because I'm also managed to be over that. So in addition to those costs I mentioned on benefits, it's also we're losing 4% off-schedule salary this coming year. This coming year, that off-schedule, because it's off-scheduled, drops off. So as it sits now, with that dropping off, and then benefits going up, like I truly am, probably making less money than I did a couple of years ago. We are negotiating salary and benefits, so it certainly could change. And so far, as President Nepp mentioned, we had one meeting for IBB. It went great, and I don't anticipate there being issues. But of course, when you come to finances, things get a little sticky. I recognize that. I will say that, let me get to this point because I had to skip so much. Okay, I recognize that some of the needed changes, like I mentioned, the percentage base, they're going to cost more, okay? I'm not naive to that. But there's money available, right? There is money available. The question that I would present to everyone is of the money that is available to be spent by WSD, how high on the list of priorities is paying, retaining, and hiring teachers and staff? Because there is always money available, right? Some things you have to pay for, certainly. But there's other times that it's choices that are made to be spent elsewhere instead of on staff. So that would be my question. If the answer becomes, we're entering tougher financial and uncertain times, and therefore can't make the requested changes or something of that nature, I have my answer. I have not received this response yet, but I'm making it publicly known that that answer will be absolutely unacceptable, okay? It's hard on me, hard on us, okay? So that would not be appropriate. So in the short term, though, recalibrating of how benefits are viewed and how WSD plans to retain and attract qualified educators is imperative. This begins, but not ends, with an equitable cost-sharing arrangement. An equitable cost-sharing arrangement would only be a start, however, as growing healthcare costs will continue to strain the finances of WSTA and WSD alike. So in addition to the changes made at the bargaining table, I call upon the board and WSD to find solutions to bring down costs. President Nepp mentioned potentially one. I'm not knowledgeable enough to say that, but that was referring to Keenan. That's one option. Having a joint committee between WSD and WSTA to explore various options to bring down costs is a prudent step to make, in my view. Bargaining contract alone will never solve this issue. Even if we get an agreement in a contract, we'll probably be talking about this again unless something else changes structurally. So the time to act is now, before potential recruits and current educators decide they cannot afford to work for or in WSD and take their talents and passions elsewhere. Thank you for hearing me yet again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public comments, public hearings, none. Now going on to action items. And one, I'm like, I don't know why I'm blinking right now. N1, Government Code Section 48918, Student Discipline, Autry Streak, and Dr. J. Burns.
So on this one, you've received early information in closed session. On 48918, Student Discipline Case Number 2023-01S. And in closed session, it was presented. And now the recommendation for this student discipline case for a stipulated expulsion.
Oh, no, I have no comments. I don't know if anybody else does. I think we heard enough of what we needed to hear. I'd like to make the motion to accept staff recommendation.
Vice President Pizzotti motions. Give me a second. Trustee Wong, seconds. Roll call first, and then motion. Roll call, got it. Sir. Kirby Gonzalez? And I choose, say yes to the action. Oh, and now, sorry. I didn't realize that. Roll call, vote, President Pizzotti.
Aye.
Trustee Wong.
Aye.
I already said aye. Yep, you're good. Okay. Okay. And two, Approval of Washington Unified School District's 2022-23 Independent Audit Reports of the District Financial Statements, Monique Stovall, Chief Business Officer.
Good evening. This evening, I'm joined by Jesse Deo from James Morda and Company, L.L. Every year, we are required to have an external auditor audit our financial records. If you recall, our annual budget cycle in September, we have our un-audited audits, and I always share it because they haven't been audited. Now they've been audited, and Mr. Deo will share the results of that audit.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and give you the summary results of the audit as of June 30, 2023. Okay. You can, thank you. So you have a few communications in front of you. You have the governance letter. That's the auditor's communication with the board. Then when you have the audit report, which leads off with the independent auditor's report, which has the audit opinion. Then you have the internal control letter, and then the state compliance audit report, and then the federal compliance audit report. And so I'm going to go over all of those items in just a moment here. So we were engaged to conduct a financial statement audit, which covers the governmental activities and then the major funds of the district. And then we have the aggregate remaining, the smaller funds of the district. And then you have the notes to the financial statements, which highlights a significant accounts in more detail and some required disclosures. So we get the required supplementary information and follow with the supplementary information, which is in regards to the state compliance audit guide. And so leading off with the governance letter, biggest thing that you guys want to take away as a board is the audit opinion. We issued an unmodified opinion, which means the financial statements of the district were free and material statements, so they're accurate as of 6/30/2023, and they're also in conformity with the appropriate accounting standard. So we're following the governmental accounting standard model. And this is the highest level of assurance that the auditor can provide. So we worked closely with the management team at the district. We performed inquiries with not only them, but the staff as well. And so we performed those inquiries, got an understanding of all the policies and procedures, and then we came out and conducted our procedures during interim and year-end. We did not identify any issues. There were no disagreements or difficulties incurred during the course of the audit. We did not have to have any additional consultations outside of discussing with management, and we did receive the appropriate management representation. What that basically means is everything that we asked for was true and accurate to their knowledge, and so there were no issues there. In regards to any significant policies, any estimates, I did want to call out a couple of things. So we did look at management's judgment and methodology in regards to the receivables. We did not identify any issues with that. So the receivables that are booked are accurate. You know, as you know, we receive state and federal funding, so there's a little lag with when that money comes in. So we looked at their estimates and felt that it's reasonable. In regards to the pension and OPEB liabilities, so these are estimates. We do look at actuarial valuations when we look at these items and help the district reconcile and record these on the financials. And this is, and they're always in the governmental activities statements. So I'll go over those in just a moment, but I just want to let you know those are estimates, and we are relying on an actuarial valuation. And there is a timing of when that information is available. And so when we're looking at the pension information, it is a year old. So even though we're looking as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, we're looking at twenty twenty two results in that uh report, and that's what triggers the deferred inflows and outflows. Okay, and that's just the timing of of the information. I kind of went over the audit uh process, right? So when we do get the understanding of the policies and procedures, then we do a thing, a procedure called a test controls. So then we verify what the staff told us is actually what they do. All right, and if there's any issues um noted, not only do we identify and talk to management, but we also will then call you and let you know what we found. Uh, because you didn't hear from us, no news is good news. All right? And so as I mentioned earlier, everything went as planned. There were no findings identified. So good news there. No significant adjustments or disclosures that were not reflected in the financial statements, so they're complete and accurate as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. And so now I'm gonna get into the actual audit report. So uh on pages one through three, uh, that's where our audit report, our independent artist report is, and on page one you'll notify, you'll see that we have an unmodified opinion. Following the uh in uh in independent orders report is the management discussion analysis. So pages four through eleven. And this is basically like a Cliff Notes summary. If you don't want to read the entire eighty ninety page audit report, do read this. Uh, it's a high level summary of what happened during the entire year and where the district is going. I did pull out a couple of items uh to share with you. Uh, so the summary statement of net position. So this is one of those governmental uh statements I was talking about uh government wide. But this takes everything that that Monique and Billy uh uh explained during uh some of these meetings with you. It also compiles on long-term items, so the capital assets, long-term uh liabilities, they're also in in this. So when I'm talking about this is high level, including everything. So total assets are up twenty eight point seven million. I'm gonna get into a little bit more detail in just a second. Then you got the deferred items, deferred outflows and inflows. Deferred outflows uh were down five point one million. Uh, liabilities uh were down twenty three uh point uh five million. Actually, that should be up. Um, and then uh deferred inflows were down five point two million and net position was up five point three million. And let's go to the next slide here. So uh, if you can click a couple more times, we'll see some boxes pop up there. So um, the increase in the total assets. So we we did receive some one-time funding last year. Um, so that's the reason why the total assets were uh higher. Um. And then in regards to the deferred inflows and outflows, again, they're related to the pension items. Okay, so because there's a a year gap between uh the actuarial evaluation for the pension, anything that the districts uh contributed to the PERS and STIRS liability, it actually gets parked in deferred outflows. And so the actual expense is the difference in those changes from the deferred outflow from last year and this year, same thing with the inflow from last year and this year. And I think you guys may remember when I was presenting last year and we had that huge decline in the pension uh liability. It was because it's tied to the market. So in twenty twenty one, remember the market was up. Well, last year the opposite was happening, right? And I said that this year you would expect an increase in those liabilities. Well, this is what happened. So last year uh we were at three hundred and twenty uh million, uh, almost three hundred and twenty one million. Well, this year that we audited three hundred and forty four point four million. So there was a huge increase uh in the pension uh liabilities. Uh, it was offset a little bit by the bond pay pay downs, but the pension liability increase was the the bulk of that uh increase there. And then again, the deferred inflows are just related to those uh changes. In regards to statement of activities, this is like the income statement, if you will. Okay, um, so revenues were up thirty eight point uh seven million, but then expenses were also up. Um, again, those changes in the pension uh and the fixed assets, they're also allocated in this statement. So if you really wanted to see, you know, apples to apples, you'd want to look at the governmental statements. Uh, what happens in the twelve months and then do the comparison. So um, we did have increases in revenues and expenses. Um, all in all, when you're looking at last year's increase in that position versus the increase in that position this year, we actually had a decrease in the change. Um, but overall, which you'll see in the next slide here, you'll see that last year we had nineteen point eight million increase in that position. Uh, this last year we had a five point three million. So although it wasn't as great of a year, overall, your net position still increased, which is good news considering the economic times that we're in and where we're headed. Right? There's a lot of uncertainty. So that's a testament to your management team doing their due diligence and and budgeting appropriately. I'm gonna get into some of these items here. So the revenues, I told you earlier, we did have some one-time funding, and that's where you're gonna see majority of that is in federal and state funding. So you have uh an increase uh in ten point six million of that one-time funding increase. And then a lot of that that uh the changes in the salaries and benefits. So you see it's a lot of it is instruction and instruction related and pupil services. That's this is about seventy seven percent of the expenditures um at the district. And so we ended with a hundred and sixty seven uh point almost four million in total expenditures. You can just click through the rest of that. There we go. So this pie chart came out looking a little funky. Uh, apologize for that. Uh, but let me go ahead and focus on the general fund uh revenues. I actually wrote down what the the figures are. Um, so this district uh receives the majority of their funding um through L C F F, which is ninety million. Um, and you can actually find on the governmental uh uh state statement of revenues and expenditures uh page. So I pulled out the the items for you. So ninety million is for L C F F, and that's the majority of the 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 funding sixty, that's about sixty five percent. And then we have some state funding, thirty two point two million, which is twenty three point uh one five percent. Um, and then we have some uh federal funding of eight uh eleven point one million, which is eight percent. And then we have some local funding is four point eleven percent, which is five point seven million. So that's that's focusing on a general fund. Then looking at the expenditures, um, again, I apologize for how this came up on this. It doesn't look like that on uh my slides. Um. Salaries and benefits, I told you that that makes a majority of uh the expenditures from the general fund. So certificated salaries is forty point nine million, which is uh equates to thirty nine percent of the expenditures out of the general fund. Classified salaries are fifteen point eight million, which is sixteen percent. Then we have benefits, twenty three point six million, which is twenty two percent. And then we have books and supplies, six point five million, which makes it five percent. Uh, we do have other uh services, um, so thirteen point nine million. And then we have uh capital uh outlay, uh, one million, and then the other outgo, uh, seven hundred thousand. This is the trends and analysis, one of the supplementary schedules that's required. I like to present this. This focuses on the general fund, but it shows a look back last couple of years, then the year of audit, um, and then how Monique led off with uh talking about the uh adopted budget. So this is back from September. As of that point in time, that's that first column, the adopted budget. So that's outdated, so you don't have to really pay attention to that. Uh, we've had the first interim report last month, and so I would focus on those numbers when you're looking at that column. Uh, but what I wanted to point out, uh, some good news, changing fund balance in the middle there. You've had surpluses in the pre all three years. So that is great. We've, as of that point in time, we also budgeted for a surplus. Okay, so I audited about forty four, forty five uh L E A's. Um, I've usually have seen a deficit budgeted. So you guys are doing a good job. Okay, so uh, that's good news there. Uh, you guys have a healthy uh ending fund balance with the general fund and in overall net position, considering that huge net pension uh increase. Because that's what lowers your net position, but it makes it look like things are not as good as they really are, and that's out of your control. I just wanted to kind of uh mention that. If you take the twenty one twenty two fiscal year out, when you're focusing on long-term debt, if you take that out as an outlier, you're still heading in the right direction. You had three hundred and fifty million in in long-term liabilities in in fiscal year twenty twenty one. And then you've you forward to where we are as of this audit report, three hundred and twenty three. So your long-term liabilities went down twenty six million. That's good news. Okay, um. When we look at the ADA, so remember how I I mentioned that when we're looking at your uh general fund uh revenues and how sixty four point seven percent is L C F funding? Well, that formula, ADA is a is a large component of that. So we've uh been sort of in a in a declining enrollment. Uh, we're looking at the last few years, we had five hundred and two ADA that lost there. Um, so that's something to be mindful about. Okay, so that one-time funding I talked about, that's one time. And so we're in a in a deficit as a whole. So I just want to point these things out. You know, I know there's, you know, some negotiations happening. Just be careful when you're budgeting and making those decisions. We do have a healthy reserve. This is awesome. Um, like I said, my other forty some odd L E A's, there's sometimes just barely getting to three percent. Okay, so you guys have a healthy reserve. Again, that's a testament to your budget, your management team making good decisions. So uh, I would uh continue to encourage that type of decision-making as we head into this uh uncertain time. And this is just a visual representation of the ADA of the last nine, ten years. So I have been talking about the financial statement audit. Um, we do have some other audits that we perform. Um, we do have to perform a state laws and regulation audit. Uh, I'm pleased to report to you that we did not identify any findings with the state compliance laws and regulations. So district is in compliance. We issued an unmodified opinion on the state um audit in regards to the internal control. So that we don't issue an opinion on on that. We have to identify any control deficiencies. If there are any significant deficiencies or mature weaknesses, we do not identify any. So that's great. It's a great news and a great job and a testament to your management team. That means when the money comes in, it's accounted for, there's checks and balances, and when it's dispersed out uh to make payments, it's following the proper protocol. Um, so uh, that's good. We need to have those checks and balances. Um, so they're doing a great job there. So again, uh, no deficiencies identified. In regards to the the single audit is what they also refer to the federal uh laws and regulations. Uh, we did, we had to test a few federal programs. Um, we did not identify any mature weaknesses or some deficiencies, and we issued an unmodified opinion on the uh federal compliance audit. So clean sweep all the way through. Um, again, I mentioned a few times, the financial condition of the district has improved and it's a testament to your uh great management team. So I wanted to thank uh Monique, Billy and the rest of the district staff for all their hard work, because we did have to uh perform quite a few audits. And so uh, I'll leave it up to you guys for any questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comments? None received? Any comments from the board?
So let's see, I I only had a couple of comments. I'm very thrilled that we've been able to maintain, and we we see this when we do our budget, um, a positive uh certification as well as our our um reserves as high as we do. That always makes me feel good and um, you know, our compensations are in the sweet spot between seventy and eighty percent, where we're not going over and above, where we can tend to get too far out of balance uh with programming. Um, the one thing I did have a question about was why why is the pension liabilities higher now than prior year? So they're tied to the market performance. So the the way that it looks the total, uh, so you have the total uh assets, the planned assets. Then you have the liability, right? And you get the net pension liability. Right now we're underfunded, right? As a whole in California, every district has to uh basically take their proportion share and recognize it on their books. So if you go back nine years, because we're going into our tenth year of having this Gatsby showing up, you didn't have to have this liability on your books. You literally just had to say, this is how much you're contributing for person stars, show us an expense and you're good. Back in twenty fourteen, I believe, uh, is when we had to implement this, and what they're saying is depending on how much you contribute to it, there's a formula, okay? They say you're gonna take this little portion and you're gonna uh add this to your liability. And if you ever were funded fully, then it's gonna become an asset. Okay? Right now, because it's underfunded, it's it's looking at the dollars that they've collected, right? And they're looking at the market performance. So sometimes the assets are inflated. In twenty twenty one, they were inflated. That's the reason why you saw a huge decrease in that pension liability. Okay, but in twenty twenty two, the market was down twenty to twenty five percent. Then those assets went back down. They were valued at a lower amount.
Right. So I guess the question I have is, it's smoothed over thirty years. So why is it like, why are we having show this on our books if if, you know, the, when we say unfunded, I mean, it really triggers me because represent a state employee union who's in Perth, right? So um, the unfunded liability is always it's historic. That's how we operate. We accept that it's going to be to a modicum degree unfunded, and it always will be because not everybody is going to retire right, right this time. So the employees that are working today are paying for the employees of yesteryear. We we understand that. And that's the way it's always going to be. So why do we have to have you? I guess that's my question.
That's a good question. We all had the same question, but the people, the great people in in Gatsby, they thought this is better representation of financial reporting that it shows the true picture. That's their words, right? And then then they followed two years later with the O P E V liability, right? So uh, but that one is more in your control, right? Uh, because you can actually throw extra money at it and lower that and it can turn into an asset. And for a lot of entities last year, it did become an asset. Uh, but then this year, because of market performance, right, it then became a liability again. The pension one is totally out of your control. That's why when you guys are making your your actual decisions on where to spend and how to spend, it's best to look at the governmental statements, which is within the twelve months, right? That's what I would recommend you guys to do. But unfortunately, like, that's just what every governmental agency that contributes to contributes to PERS and then L E A's also to STIRS, they're all in the same boat.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, thank you. We, in terms of um funding that O P E V that we started funding, um, the thought initially, I think my understanding was that's something that we would put money in if we had extra money and it came up, but it's not something that was necessarily one of our priorities to do. Um, and so, but then hearing it can change from an asset to a liability, what is a suggestion moving forward for a board like ours that's physically doing um well in terms of when we fund that, when we don't, and what that looks like?
So yeah, again, and it really, it's up to you guys on, I mean, you have a lot of decisions to make, right? You have negotiations, you have facility upgrades, right? You have a lot of things going on. So if you truly do have extra money set aside, yeah, it's good to pay it down, right? But it's just like your mortgage. You have a good interest rate. Why do that? Why you just invest it in something and, you know? So, yeah.
You that's helpful. And I just appreciate. Thank you. That's helpful. And I just appreciate having, we know that our fiscal team does a really good job, and they give great presentations, make it very thorough. So thank you to Monique and your whole team. And it's great to have the auditors come in and just reaffirm that, and it gives us all peace of mind. So, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to add one more comment about your management team. They're very proactive. I mean, they don't just get clean audits because they just do what is necessary. There's things that are always changing. Laws and regulations come about, and they're they, when they hear about it, they come and ask, you know, and then we tell them like what what it is, and then they get ready for it, you know? And so they they're very proactive. So along with all their other responsibilities, then they're trying to stay on top of things. So they're doing a great job.
You're ready? I move to adopt. And Monique, we're really lucky to have you.
Yes.
All around. And Billy.
We're really lucky to have all you all.
Yes.
All right, so.
I just want to make sure that we also recognize that Jessica is, they're not stopped. We got the audit report, and I'm reading, but and I didn't understand. And I creeped out. That way, we could make that we understand. They really did take the time to make sure that we had in depth. And then I absolutely want truly recognize our fiscal under the leadership, Billy Duke, and our director, not quite two years now. And I just really appreciate the entire and the don't want that yet.
Thank you again.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have it moved by Trustee Wong and seconded by Vice President Kazadi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Onto the next. And three, approval of the Washington Unified School District's twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three independent audit report of Measure V and Measure Z bond performance and financial statements. Monique Stovall, business, chief business officer, again.
Again. So in addition to our financial audit, our bonds are required to be audited as well. And that occurs every year. And so we're here to have that presentation.
So I'll try to quickly go over this. So we have Measure V and Measure Z. We have a financial and performance audit. Go ahead. I won't go into the background. You guys are aware that we have a couple different measures. And when with those measures, we have a few series. So Measure Z has one series, Series A, sixty million dollars that were issued a couple of years ago, and then we still have some remaining issuances. Next one. And then, so what we do is, we look at when the money comes in, we want to make sure it's recorded accurately in the appropriate separate fund and resource code. And then we have Measure V. We have a couple of different issuances. So this is fully issued twenty-four point nine in twenty fifteen, and then the same amount in twenty seventeen, for a total of forty-nine point eight million. And so until these funds are fully spent, you are required to have a financial and performance audit. And and you're supposed to have a citizens' bond oversight committee to oversee and make sure that everything is being spent. And again, we did verify that the the funding for Measure V was also separately tracked and recorded set aside from Measures Z, because you don't want to co-mingle these funds, not only with in other measures, but also within other funds. So we verified that piece. Just like I let off before, we do have a governance letter. That's the auditor communicating to the board of the audit. The biggest thing you want to take away from the bond audits, and I'm going to go ahead and talk about both these simultaneously. So we issued an unmodified opinion on both Measure V and Z. So they're both presented fairly as of six thirty twenty twenty-three, so they're accurate. And then they're also in conformity with the appropriate accounting standards. So we're using the governmental accounting standards model. Again, we worked closely with the management team. We performed inquiries, and we did not identify any issues here, no disagreements or difficulties during the course of the audit. We did not have any extra consultations, and we received the appropriate management representations that everything was true and accurate to their knowledge. So the only estimate or judgment involved here is with the payables, and that's just the timing of those invoices that come in. So as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the amounts that you see in accounts payable, that's just a timing of when those invoices received and subsequently paid for. We did do a test of controls to ensure that the the checks and balances that that take place on a daily basis, they're also happening with the bond proceeds as well. And again, no issues were identified, so no findings. Everything went went as planned. There were no significant adjustments or disclosures that were omitted. So everything you have in front of you is true and accurate and complete as of six thirty twenty twenty-three. And again, I'm going to show everything on the same slide for both measures, just for efficiency sake. So again, the audit opinion on both audit reports, well, you can find on page one. And then looking at the balance sheet, I have them side by side. Measure V has four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-three of unspent funds as of June thirtieth. We had fourteen thousand, two hundred left as payable as of that point in time. And so the difference is restricted only for Measure V purposes. It cannot be spent for anything other than what those funds were intended for. Now focusing on Measure Z, we have fifty-seven million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and ninety. And then looking at the accounts payable, we had eight hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars of accounts payable as of that point in time that was paid for subsequently. And then again, restricted for Measure Z projects only, we have fifty-six million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars. How we got there? So I want to talk about the other local revenues. So the only income you see with bond financial statements, it's the interest earned on the unspent funds. And we also had to recognize the fair market value adjustment. That's the reason why you have a negative revenue on Measure V. So what is happening is, a lot of this money is sitting in the county treasury. And the county treasury, it's tied to the market, right? And so as of that point in time, if you pulled all, if everybody that's pooling all their money with the county treasury decided, we're going to pull our money out, then you would really assume that loss, okay? But this is just a paper transaction to show the unrealized gain or loss. That's where that gets parked. So don't be alarmed at, why is that negative twelve thousand dollars? There is a, an amount that's also parked in that one point one million as well. But because we have so much outstanding and sitting in the county treasury, it's also earning interest. And so that's, it's absorbed that fair market value adjustment in there. I just wanted to let you know about that. When you're looking at the expenditures, we tested eighty-five percent of both of Measure V and Z. Just because, you know, there's a lot of interest, you know, taxpayers are paying for all of this, so they want to know is the district doing right by these funds, right? So I'm here to let you know that we've tested eighty-five percent. So most of these expenditures, we did not identify any issues. We looked at all of these transactions, and we compared it to the bond measure text to make sure that they're all allowable. So that's what the the performance audit's all about. Okay, so not only was this fairly stated, so that's the financial audit, and conform and conformity with the governmental accounting standards, but when we were looking at the performance piece, these are, the the this money is spent in accordance with the bond measure text. So no issues were noted here. And as of June thirtieth, we had four hundred and twenty-three thousand, two fifty-three for Measure V and fifty, almost fifty-seven million with Measure Z. And so I kind of jumped ahead, performance audit. We performed that audit and did not identify any instances of misappropriation. So everything was spent in accordance with the bond measure text. And so we look at the biggest risks here, conflict of interest, any change orders. We looked at all that. We looked at the bidding process, the district follow all those rules and processes, and we looked at any change orders to see if they're reasonable. So we didn't identify anything that came to our attention that would warrant us to communicate anything to you. So no items were concerned on the bond performance. And in regards to the interim control, we didn't identify any deficiencies. So no control deficiencies, significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So again, clean sweep all the way through. With that, I'll leave it up to you guys for any questions.
Sorry, I was reading something. Are there any public comments?
None received.
Comments from the board?
So I basically only had one public comment, and it was, or not, board comment, and it's on Measure V. So it said this was done as of six twenty-three. Is that correct?
Six thirty.
June of, June twenty-three, right?
Yes.
And it said that we had four hundred and thirty-seven thousand in the bank or in our Measure V fund. Is that still what we have? I was just gonna say, I I'm pretty sure we spent the majority of that. Leading to my secondary question of, is the Measure V committee going to be necessary going forward?
Once all the funds are spent, it's not going to be.
That's kind of where I'm going.
And then you won't have to have an audit after the final audit on Measure V.
We'll share, though. After June thirtieth, we learned that we would be, and we actually received state facility funds and over a million dollars. And so many thanks to our Measure V citizens' bond oversight that we will and so we will be coming to the facility subcommittee with recommendations on how to use that funding to continue work that was not able to be completed under the Measure V bond.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for this, and thanks to our bond oversight committee. We know that they're doing a good job. We keep a close pulse on this here. And we are grateful. The community has overwhelmingly supported both of these bonds. And we've done them right with what we've been getting right now. Westfield Elementary School is under construction for our kids. And so having the audit process is very important to us, and we appreciate you being here. And it was a recommendation that the county does that as well. And I do hope that they follow through on their end with that piece. Thank you.
All right. You may move.
I will second.
You can second. All that in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So next, approval of capital program management incorporated independent consultant agreement to update the district facility design standard reviews and single source manufacturer list. Monique Stovall, chief business officer.
Welcome back. Thank you. Thank you. We are asking for your approval of this agreement with Capital Program Management to provide a design stand, to, excuse me, to update our design standards and single source manufacturers list. What is that? So in essence, right now, we are in the process, as we've shared, of completing our Westfield modernization project. Through that process and through that project, we have identified what we would like as the standard for our schools moving forward. Should it be something as seemingly simple as doorknobs to the configuration of a classroom or windows, et cetera? And so what we need to do now is update our standard so that align, they align with the standards that we have now, especially as we go into our Elkhorn modernization project. Capital Program Management will assist us with that process. The price of the, or the cost of the contract is fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars paid through the deferred maintenance fund. What that includes is labor, research, conversations, and collaboration with staff, including what I like to say is a work product for our district. Thank you.
Are there any public comments?
None received.
Okay, we have any board comments? All right. Pretty standard thing that we do every year. So I move. Right?
I second.
So we have Trustee Wong, who, okay, just making sure Christina gets it. Okay, you're welcome. And Kirby Gonzalez, two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I too say aye. Thank you. And now don't go anywhere, Monique. Approval of a established and a pool of qualified furniture fixtures and equipment, F F and E firms. There you go.
Thank you. At this time, we are asking for you to approve a pool, meaning a list of standard vendors whom we would go to for, we call it F F and E fixtures, furniture fixtures and equipment. In November, we released a request for proposals in RFP in order to seek vendors that would meet our standards. So when it's time for us to purchase something, then we can do so quickly. And so we request your approval to include the five different vendors included in the rationale in our pool.
All right, do we have any public comments?
None received.
Okay, that's great. Any comments from the guests?
Just a quick question. Are these all vendors that we have used in the past, or have we had any previous relationship with these vendors?
You know, I am not able to answer that question, but I will certainly get back to you.
It's not really pertinent. I'm just wondering if we've had any sort of track history with how they perform.
I will. Anybody else?
No.
Whenever you're ready, I'll move because it's another standard procedure. But, okay, so we'll go ahead and I was gonna move.
Oh, I'm comfortable. I'll move forward.
All right, so.
Want to move in a second?
You choose. I'll move.
Hey, clerk. I was gonna say clerk coffee. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez can move in a second. Blues and Trustee Wong, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I do say aye. And now on to the next. Approval of the out-of-state travel to the Rain Bird Academy irrigation training in Sparks, Nevada on April twenty-third through twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Monique Stovall.
Thank you. We request approval for an out-of-state travel to a train, uh, excuse me, a Rain Bird Academy for irrigation in Sparks, Nevada. One of our standards in the business department is that our facilities reflect how we feel about our students and staff. And we believe that in order for our team to be able to reach that goal, they need to be properly trained. And one areas of growth that we have, I would say, as an entire district and district team is our irrigation, so that our grounds can look beautiful. And so we are requesting to send our new Leeds grounds person to this training in Sparks, Nevada. This person began in August and was not able at that time to attend the trainings here in California. The closest training at this time is in Sparks, Nevada, and we estimate that that cost will be twenty-eight hundred dollars.
All right, do we have any public comments?
None received.
I I do have a comment. I I am certainly going to support this because I want our staff to be fully trained. But I will say this, there was a point made earlier about out-of-state travel and given the state's budget woes, as well as, you know, how that is going to trickle down to the district, I I tend to agree. This money is already been budgeted for this year. I'm inclined to say, yeah, for this year, we should be doing this. But for next fiscal year as a policy, we should probably not But for next fiscal year as a policy, we should probably not go out of state for travel and focus our PD on things in state. So if that means researching trainings ahead of time to find the ones that are actually in state, then let's focus on doing that. Those are just things to be mindful of going forward.
Any other comments?
I generally support staff PD, especially our classified and our, who actually work really hard. And Nevada is just across the way. Sparks isn't that far. Probably farther to drive to LA. So really just want to support that. But whenever you're ready, I'm happy to move.
All right, and I'll just say that we do also have our budget meeting coming up, I think, very soon. We like special board meetings, apparently. And so that'll be a good time to talk about that as well in terms of what is our thoughts moving forward down the road. I hear you on out of state and just as we look at our buckling up a little bit. But I support it as well. So I move.
All right, so we have. So we have Kirby Gonzalez moves, Wong second. All in favor?
Aye.
I too say aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now approval of the diverse educator and aspiring leaders program funding increase. Abdou Galla, interim assistant superintendent of human resources.
Good evening, President Coffee, trustees, Dr. Hildreth and Washington family and the community members. We are here tonight. I'm joined here with our HR Tosa, Jenner Roski, and we are here to follow up on our conversation from December regarding the diverse educator and aspiring leaders program. Tonight, Ms. Roski will provide you some recap of the information that we shared last month and then her recommendation. And then she'll ask you for your action to approve additional funding for this program to, for us to be able to provide the same support to our participants that this program was originally designed for. With that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Roski.
Good evening again, not again tonight, but again since December. It doesn't seem like it was that long ago, but we've had a whole winter break since then. So thank you for having me back here and it's nice to see all of you. So again, like Farah said, we're gonna go over kind of just really quick the objectives that we talked about in December as well as the budget that we had originally, along with kind of the renovations to the budget. It's late, my brain's not working, but the, what we discovered about the budget and what we might need to ask for more funding for and then our recommendation. So again, we just want to reiterate that our purpose for this program, the diverse educator and aspiring leader programs is to recruit a more diverse educator and leadership workforce. So like we talked about last time, there is a teacher shortage right now and we are really looking to grow our own, really focus on first and foremost, our classified staff, our community members who want to get their first teaching credential and support them financially, support them through feedback on their performance and building a network of support in the district and as well as grow leaders from within. So people who are committed to our district, to our kids and who want to get their first admin credentials. We also really want to recruit staff that reflect the diversity of our student population. So that's one of our big focuses as well. As everything we do aligns to our strategic plan, so does this. You can see those areas listed there. And then just a quick recap of the budgets that we talked about before. The diverse educators budget, we had some areas of savings as well as some areas where we identified need for more funding. Specifically and excitingly, we do have a lot more of our candidates, our program participants who live within our attendance boundaries. So again, we want to see that investment in our community and we're seeing that there. And then on the next slide, our aspiring leaders program budget. One of the areas that we identified a need for more funding is specifically for our leadership training series. So we had another session last night and our attendance was even higher than our first two sessions. So very exciting to see you. We were represented by every classification last night. We had classified, certified, confidential admin and a substitute. So very exciting to see that. We talked about budget last night. And then this slide is just a summary of what that looks like. So where the additional funding is needed for a total of three hundred and eighty four thousand dollars estimated funds needed to move this program forward for the next three years. And we've identified a potential funding source for that money from the twenty four, twenty seven, two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty seven. And so again, we're recommending that we do increase our funding for this program by three hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. That would be an increase for the three years of the program. It would allow us to implement the program to fidelity the way it was originally intended and designed and presented. It would allow us to ensure that we have the ability to support thirty diverse educator candidates and fifteen aspiring leader candidates. And tonight, our requested action is to approve providing extra funding for those programs so we can move forward with the three year plan that we originally had.
All right, do we have any public comments?
None received.
Board comments? Questions?
Thank you very much. I have a quick question just to make sure I'm understanding this. So if, as we, this is asking for approval for three years. If next year somebody wanted to join the aspiring leaders, would they be able to join that? Or is this going to be capped since, I see since there were more people and expected the variance went up twenty five thousand? Could that potentially happen?
Yes, so the leadership series, and I did not put that part in there, is a, is the second part of the aspiring leaders program. So the aspiring leaders program is approximately five candidates every year for a total of fifteen over the three years. So our first cohort was, or is, six participants. And then for our second cohort, we just accepted four more. So we'll have ten between the first two years. But the leadership series is open to anybody and you don't have to commit to all six sessions. We understand, you know, everybody has different availability throughout the year. And it's six different sessions each of the three years, so a total of eighteen different sessions. So anybody, any staff member could participate at any time. They don't have to be part of the aspiring leaders program, but the people in the aspiring leaders program must attend a year of sessions, at least.
So then if we had six people and then four people, that's not, that's gonna be capped. It's not like fifteen people can join next year.
No, no, and we, I mean, we had to make some tough decisions this year because that was a really popular application. So we, our goal is for our third cohort to have five more people. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, thank you, Jennifer and Farah for bringing this forth. I think it's one of the best investments, kind of innovative investments to pour back into our work. So really appreciate that kind of due diligence and really excited about the increased interest, if you will, because I think we all have said like grow your own, especially within our West SAC boundaries, provide our classifieds and subs like that opportunity is just a tremendous, just something to be really proud of. Even though we have to cap it.
Really well done. Yes, the only reason of cap is because we all know our budget. And so you're right, this is, this is an incredible program and I wouldn't ask those questions unless we had some budget pieces.
When you're ready, I'll, I'll move. All right. He beat you. So we're gonna have trustee Wong move and vice president Pizotti second. All in favor?
Aye.
I do say aye. Thank you. Now approval of the two thousand twenty three school accountability report cards. Austria Street, assistant superintendent of educational services.
Good evening, trustees and superintendent and of course staff and community members. I'm joined this evening by director Stephanie Groot, our director of compliance and accountability. And tonight we stand before you asking for approval of our two thousand twenty three school accountability report cards in accordance with state and federal law. As you know, these documents include information like demographic information, academic achievement, and we need to get those approved before we send them to the CDE by February first. So are there any questions for us before, or any additional information you need before you act on this item?
Are there any public comments?
None received.
And we have one question.
My only question is, once we approve this, how long until we expect it to also be on our schools websites?
So once they are approved, I send the link and they will be on our school websites. And I also need to link them to CDE. So it's a dual process, so they will be very quick. And then I did also want to add that they will be available in Spanish and English. So that request has already been put in, so that link will be there.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Got to move.
Motion to approve?
Sarah. Okay, Sarah Kirby Gonzalez, motions. Wong a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I do say aye. Approval of the community schools memorandum of understanding between the United Way, California Capitol Region and the Washington Unified School District to support the Washington Unified Community Schools Initiative. Austria Street, assistant superintendent of educational services.
Good evening again. Thank you. And this evening, our CBO and myself, we stand before you asking for approval of the memorandum of understanding between Washington Unified School District and United Way. The purpose of the MOU really is to clearly identify the responsibilities of both parties. So our district and United Way in the successful implementation of the community schools grant. The MOU also outlines compensation, scope of work, as well as requirements for data sharing between both parties. And the fiscal impact is five hundred and six thousand to be paid to United Way from our community, state community schools grant.
Five years.
I'm sorry, for five years, yes, through the two thousand twenty seven, two thousand twenty eight school year.
Do we have any public comments?
None received.
Have any comments from or questions from the board?
Thank you for all your hard work. I know it's been a lot of discussions with a lot of people. Whenever you're ready, I'll move.
Yeah, no, thank you very much. I appreciate that this is finally on our agenda and we're able to.
Thank you.
Trustee Wong moves.
Second.
Pizotti seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Approval to attend out of state innovation school summer conference in Las Vegas, Nevada from July eighth to July twelfth. Austria Streets.
Yes, good evening again. Standing before you this evening on behalf of our director of special service, student services, I'm sorry. We're requesting your approval in sending three of our staff members, two social workers, one youth outreach specialist to the innovative school summit over the summer. There's two options, one in New York, one in Las Vegas. We've selected the closest one, which is Las Vegas. And the purpose for their attendance really is to gain and strengthen their skills in supporting students with social emotional learning, mental health. And the fiscal impact is twenty eight hundred dollars per participant for a total roughly eighty four hundred dollars.
Do we have any public comments?
None received.
From the board, questions?
I made my comments.
Notes are the same.
Thank you.
Same comment. Whenever you're ready, I'll move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Wong, second by Pizotti, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Approval to attend the out of state conference association to California school administrator administrators, ACSA, regions one, two, three, four, North State Professional Development Conference, April twenty sixth, twenty eighth in Reno, Nevada.
Yes, and again, I'm joined by director Groot, who's very active in AXA and is a part of AXA leadership and can possibly speak to the quality of this learning opportunity for our school site leaders. If you have questions about that. Our request is that you give us approval to send twelve school administrators to Reno in April. It's over a weekend, so school sites wouldn't be impacted. And the total cost per participant is eleven hundred dollars. And we would use administrator professional development funds to send these twelve employees. In total, the cost would be roughly thirteen thousand dollars.
Any public comments?
None received.
Okay. Go ahead, we have a question.
Okay. I just want to note for this, for the future and make sure for public comment when it, or for the public, when it says financial impact, which you already mentioned, so I appreciate you saying that, that it just either says per person. It does note that there's twelve and we can see it there, but just that it's always clear for the public. I appreciate you being that.
Absolutely.
And then, yes, the same comments that we'll talk about on our board study session. And with that, I move to approve.
Moved by Kirby Gonzalez. Second by Pizotti, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and now we are on to information discussion items. English language development program and services update, Austria Street. Superintendent of Educational Services. Welcome back.
We know director Tran doesn't need any introductions, but I will anyway. So she's before you tonight to give you an update on how our English learners are doing in our schools. And of course, to take any questions you may have. So without further ado, director Stacy Tran.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. So I'm here today to give an update on English learner progress and some demographics about our district. As you can see, my presentation aligns to many areas of our strategic plan, specifically the elimination of disproportionality. That's really important that we give every student an opportunity here and equity. So in this presentation, I will share our demographic data for our English learners here in Washington Unified. I'll highlight many of the program successes. I'll present some academic achievement data and then identify some next steps and future goals. And I just want to start by saying how proud I am of the teaching and learning of our English learners here in the district. Even seeing our student board member, Diego, he was my ELD student back at Elkhorn many years ago. So to see him now so articulate and confident, it's the reason why I do what I do. And just to see that our students are going on to do incredible things, thanks in large part to the amazing teaching that our teachers are doing every single day. So I have to start with some appreciation. These are a lot of numbers, but here are demographics for English learners in the district. About sixteen percent of all WUSD students are English learners. So we're right at about twelve hundred and four. Now we're up to twelve hundred and five because of course we got a new one today. Of those English learners, twenty four percent are considered newcomers. So that's less than three years in the United States. So that's the number of English learners that's grown the most significantly in the past four or five years. We used to have maybe ten percent of our students newcomers, but now that's growing significantly. Of those English learners, sixty percent were born outside of the United States. So that's about seven hundred and fourteen students, but it impacts a lot of the classroom instruction that happens. That is up from twenty percent in two thousand twenty one. So that's grown incredibly. And then you might be interested too in the birthplaces of our multilingual students outside the United States. Just a few short years ago, it used to be Mexico, but now Afghanistan has surpassed that by far. Also, Central and South America is our, one of our faster growing regions. And then Russia has remained stable, but Ukraine is also growing as we predicted a few years ago. And then about fifteen percent of our students born outside of the United States were born in other countries. So in Washington Unified, we have thirty nine different countries represented by our students today. Definitely something to be proud of. From our language census, which we do every day based on our data from our seabeds day in October. You can see from the pie chart on the left that about sixty, oh my goodness, this is small. Sixty one percent of our students are English only. They come from households where only English is spoken. Sixteen percent are English learners. Eighteen percent are reclassified, so they were English learners, but they've gotten great instruction and passed their English language development assessment. And then four percent are IFEP, which means initially fluent, which are our students who come from multilingual households, but the first time they took the assessment, they passed. multilingual households, but the first time they took the assessment, they pass. So a lot of our families speak multiple languages in the home. So while we only have 16% of our students classifying as English learners, it's important to cluster together the Initially Fluent, the Reclassified Fluent, and the English learners to reflect that 38% of our students go home every day and speak another language other than English. Many of them speak English as well, but it's important to realize that that, it's a pretty significant number. Interestingly, that's down from 40% last year, and I think that's due to a lot of reasons. But it's remained about stable for the past three or four years, between 37 and 40%. The graph on the right shows the language fluency by school, and I will not read you all those numbers, but just in case you wanted to know, the column with the blue box is where our English learners are currently housed. So as you can see, the highest number is at Riverbank, which is why we chose to place our newcomer center there. Also, River City High School has seen the number of English learners increase, and it's not that our number of long-term English learners is growing, which I'll get to in a minute, it's because they're also receiving many, many newcomer students, and as a result, we've increased our support there. On the next slide, these are our typographies, and that just goes to say that not all English learners are created equal. They have widely different immigration stories. Many of our English learners were born here and they've never left the country, and some of them come from homes where someone may have spoken another language when the home language survey was filled out when they registered in schools, but it's not a language that they use daily. So there's a wide variety in the newcomers, in the English learners in our district. So starting from left to right, the time in the United States increases. So starting with our newcomers, 24% of our students, including our newcomer center, we've increased our support to those students. And there are now specific targeted newcomer classes, not only at Riverbank and the newcomer center, but also now at River City High School for the first time, and Westmore Oaks. So I'm very proud of that and impressed at the foundational literacy skills that our students are getting, thanks to those programs. 64% of our English learners are English learners who've been in the country between three and six years. And then 12% are long-term English learners who have been in program six or more years. So that number has gone down a lot. Over the last few years, our number of long-term English learners used to be a lot higher. So we've been very strategic with our integrated and designated ELD to really give those students the support they need so that they are able to reclassify. We're also increasing our professional learning around English learners, and we're providing instructional coaching. And then recently this year, just last month, we've added a couple of technology tools to really support our long-term English learners. One is ListenWise at the high school. They requested that. It's a lot of listening and speaking. The listening area of LPAC is one where students tend not to do that well in, and I think it requires a lot of memory. So ListenWise is a great tech tool for practicing that. So the teachers at the high school are integrating that. And then we're just starting to use Lexia English, which is in the Lexia family, but it's specifically based on the English Language Development Standards. It gives the kids a pre-assessment, including an audio assessment, and this is the first program I've seen where it really listens to students' voices. It analyzes their speech, and then it can push out lessons that are right at their level. And then teachers can pull reports. The reports group students based on similar gaps, and so teachers can easily pull small groups and really target the English Language Development Standards if their students need a little bit of extra practice. So I'm eager to see, we just started both of those, I'm eager to wait until the end of the year and pull the data and see what impact those have on student learning. So now on to the academic achievement data. 85% of our English learners either remain the same on the LPAC test, or they increased by one level, which is great. The tests get significantly harder as it switches grade spans. So Kinder has one test, first grade has a different test, second grade has a different test, and then 3-5 is a grade span, 6-8, 9-10, and 11-12. And every time the test jumps a level, it gets increasingly harder. So that's why many of our students, and I have to say this every time, because it may not look like a lot of growth on the graph on the far right, 49% of our students grew a level or more. 36% had no change, and 15% decreased a level or more. But every time a student didn't grow or remained at the same level, either the test got harder or they grew in points. If you look at the circle in the middle, students can grow by over 100 points on the LPAC and still not jump a band. So that's why it's important to not just look at the bands and the proficiency levels, but really dig into the data and look at the point ranges that our students are scoring and how they're growing in their oral language, as well as their written language. So proud of the 49% who have increased by one or more levels, but also celebrating the success of students who grew by points, because it shows growth as well. And then also, I just put a little snapshot from our data dashboard showing that our students are making progress on the LPAC exam. Our indicator dropped a little bit. I feel like that's because two years ago, we reclassified a lot of students. We changed the reclassification criteria, and also we've made a concerted effort to really look at our students on IEPs, our Dual Identified Students, and see if the reason that they're not making progress on the LPAC is truly a language development issue, or if it's because of their disability that's holding them back. So we've been working really diligently in coordination with Carla Salvo and the special ed team to look at students one by one, by name and by need, to really figure out who they are and what we can do to support them. And sometimes that's reclassifying them so that they can get access to other support classes, because it's not their language that's holding them back. Next slide. I always want to underscore that English learners are woven throughout the LCAP, and our goal is increased or improved services for high-need students. So we have increased our instructional opportunities for our English learners. We've added one newcomer class at Riverbank this year. Now we have three different grade spans to further differentiate the needs. But something that we did last year, and something we're doing even more of this year, is having flexible groupings. Two of the classes are joined and the other is right around the corner. So if a student is extra high at math in the first through third grade class, they go next door to the four or five class. We don't want to hold anyone back because of their skills. We want to make sure that they're getting what they need. So the teachers work very closely together. They're analyzing data, and they're sharing kids constantly. Also, we've added this year a newcomer class at River City High School, and that's not just one period of English Language Development Support, it's two periods. So they're with Ms. Jen Leifson for two periods, one where they're getting their language class, another that's just newcomer skills. So she's taking them to the library to show them how to check out books, taking them to the nurse to tell them how they feel if something's not quite right. We are in the process of working with our amazing math tosa, Tammy Imgarden, to do some collaboration between the math teachers at River City and that newcomer class to really front-load some of the skills that they need in order to be successful in their math class. So I'm really proud of that. As I mentioned, we've added Lexia English and ListenWise, and of course, we're already starting to plan for this year's summer institute. For teacher support, we have professional learning. We have our Professional Learning Day coming up February 15th, and we're offering, I believe, five or six English learner sessions. So I'm excited for that. We also have after-school sessions, and this year, we've also had a guest speaker from YCWE come and speak to our site principals about the English learner roadmap and how they can really lead with a lens of equity for English learners. And then I can't brag enough about our amazing instructional coaches and our EL Program Specialist, Robin Woolgemuth. They come alongside teachers and help with lesson planning, they do demonstration lessons in classes, they sit with them and do data analysis, and then really reflect on best practices. And my favorite recent example of this, because there are so many, is in our middle school newcomer class at Riverbank. The teacher was struggling with teaching grade, because we still want to teach grade-level standards, even if students are newcomers. She was struggling with the high rigor of the math standards and also meeting the students' language needs. So she called Tammy, the math tosa, and Robin, our EL Program Specialist, and they went in together. And the three of them co-taught a lesson, and the students did a great job. So it's all of those creative solutions that are really helping not only our students, but really our teachers to learn best practices and get to see them firsthand from some of our expert teachers. Finally, in terms of expanded possibilities, we have our SEAL of Bilinguality testing. We have the State SEAL of Bilinguality, but we also, two years ago, started the Yolo County recognition for students who maybe weren't meeting all of the criteria but were fluent in another language, so we did want to celebrate and reward that. Fortunately, the State SEAL of Bilinguality requirements have changed a little bit, so they're a little more equitable now, and more students will be able to earn the SEAL. And then I'm proud to say that I'm working with Middle College and Yolo to bring the SEAL to those schools for the first time ever. Also, we're continuing our Russian and Spanish Language Arts classes for students so that they can not only grow in their English, but also their primary language. Terms of next steps, we want to continue to provide our English learners rigorous, engaging standards-based instruction in all content areas. My goal is always to increase participation in the SEAL of Bilinguality program and the Yolo County bilingual recognition. We want to continue to provide engaging, differentiated professional learning for teachers and better equip them to meet the needs of their English learners. And finally, expand supplemental supports for our newcomer students and expose teachers to best practices to meet those students' unique needs.
All right, thank you so very much. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Do we have any comments or questions from the board?
I'm, you know, English language learner, so proud of your work, so grateful for your work. And I mean, again, I have to catch a 6:00 AM flight, so I won't, I'll keep it short. I really do think that you should probably submit this for a Golden Bell Award, specifically around newcomers. Right? So the CSB should just really highlight, and I mean, I've been bragging up and down, you know, the state between starting with the SEAL at TK to the end. So it's not just piecemeal, but you actually have an entire roadmap at all grade levels that is extremely impressive. But the addition of this newcomer program, it's tremendous. And so, one, I want to encourage you to brag about us a little bit more and highlight and uplift. And then just on top of that, being targeted and intentional on equity on students with special needs and English language learners and the coaches, this is like, for so many reasons, should just be kind of celebrated across the state. And when I tell people, like during COVID, the one group that actually, the largest number of students who were reclassified, right, was during COVID, was because of the investment, because of the commitment to it, everybody in every room just kind of like, they fall back in their seat, right? Because across the state, so many subgroups were not doing well, but the fact that we were able to reclass the largest number of students in our history during that time is tremendous.
I believe you're presenting soon too, aren't you? Will you share that with the group?
Maybe. So I did submit, in response to your comment, I did submit a proposal to present at the California Association of Bilingual Education Conference next month in Anaheim on newcomers, and it was accepted. And the last time I presented, a few years ago, with one of our former colleagues, they booked me a room for 35. This time, it's for 180, so everyone's invited. So I'm excited to share that, and I'm excited that Washington Unified is sending such a big team. I'm telling them to go see other people because they've already heard me, but I'll have a lot of support, so I'm excited about that.
I think that's just such an important space to really share this work with others, because it is a model, and I will be encouraging all those I know in other districts to attend. I will be in that room too, attending. But it's just the work that you've done, to your point, it is, it's really important, and we want public education to rise across our, you know, we want to share best practices, and what you do is really the model. I have one question, and that is, when kids are reclassifying, let's say they do well in the LPAC, but they don't do well on the CASP, do they have an opportunity, are you using another tool? Is it iReady? Or how, what does that look like, and how is it working in terms of that, reclassifying if they don't do well on the CASP test?
That is a great question. So once a student is reclassified, we do monitor them for four years. So I send out annual teacher evaluations just to check and make sure that they're able to participate in class and they're on grade level. And if not, we, I work with the teachers and we suggest some interventions and some supports that can be put in place. We do continue to monitor all of our students on the iReady assessment, and we have, now that the dashboard is official and released, digging into the data and how our reclassifications are kind of misaligned with the amount of English learners scoring, meeting or exceeding standard on SPPAC. We want to do a deep dive into that and figure out what other supports should we put in place to be able to show what our English learners can do on the CASP as well as the LPAC, because it's highly rigorous. It has next-gen science standards, it has a history component, they're analyzing mathematical graphs, it's very rigorous. So that is definitely something that we need to take a look at and figure out what the missing piece is, and then come alongside of our teachers too, and see that as they practice for CASP testing, they're embedding those scaffolds and supports for our English learners to really help them know that they can do it, and yeah, and that they're capable.
It is very hard. Thank you.
I'm just going to echo their comments and just say simply how proud I am of you and the program that you've implemented. It's very impressive. It's one of the one of the most amazing programs that we have in this district. One of the things I was kind of shocked by was how quickly and how much the Afghani population has increased here. And do you recall a time at which the newcomers, the Afghani newcomers surpassed the students from Mexico or from Latin America?
I believe not until this year. This year and last year.
Interesting.
So I think Mexico, Central, and South America combined is getting there, but our Afghan newcomers are our fastest-growing group, and they continue to come, and they have widely diverse previous schooling. Some come at high school age, never having been to school, others grew up in cities and are educated and already speak three and four languages, and English is their...
I'm almost wondering if they transferred just for the newcomers. Like, hmm, we got...
I'm pretty sure that's it.
I'm like, I'm just saying, I think that might be part of it, but that just says something about this program and just everything that you're doing. Just kudos, great job. So yeah, other than that, we good?
All right, so let's go ahead. Thank you. All right, and now we're on to consent. Okay, all right, so we're, that's why I'm like, okay. Do I have a motion? Public comments? Sorry. Public comments? None received. Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
President Coffey, could I just make one request? With the consent agenda being approved and our approval of classified recommendations, we have a new employee, a new Director of Food Services who's here, and I would like, I'm asking our CBO, Monique DeWall, if she would do a little introduction of our new Food Services Director, Amber Dixon.
Yes, thank you so much for approving this consent item and also approving our new Director of Food Services and Warehousing, Amber Dixon. Amber joins us from Fairfield Chisoon. She's Assistant Director of Nutrition Services there. She's been there a couple years. One unknown thing that we would not typically have, or at least I haven't seen in a food service director, she has experience as a para educator. And I think that will really lend some extra light and insight and understanding into the needs of our students and our teachers, and I'm so happy to welcome her to our team.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for picking us.
Yes, that too. Okay, and on to the next, Board and Superintendent, or Board Governance? No, we don't have anything. Board Superintendent Comment.
Thank you. Good evening, President Coffey, trustees, colleagues, community. I want to start, because it is a new year, number one, hoping everybody had a well-deserved break and that it's time we came back and jumped right into second semester, still focused on the work to support our kids. I want to start with thanking our CSEA and WSTA Labor Presidents. We have, we have many, many conversations, and I really don't think that the work that we are able to achieve would be able to happen without the positive and healthy dialogue that we continue to have. the positive and healthy dialogue that we continue to have. So just want to highlight that and looking forward to continuing these conversations as we focus on what are the needs of our students, our families and community. So that's a highlight, but now I just want to say I would be a little remiss in not expressing my sincere sympathies to the families of Giovanni Angel Miranda and Miguel Nava Romero. Through the US, the WUSD family mourns the loss of Giovanni, we remain optimistic in our thoughts while sending strength and hope for Miguel's recovery. And as we come together to support these affected families, I really want to highlight it's essential for all of our community members to remain vigilant and raise awareness about the importance of safe driving practices. WUSD emphasizes the need for drivers to be responsible and adhere to speed limits, avoid distractions, and always yield to pedestrians, especially when we are in school zones. And so we're going to urge and ask our entire community to help us address important information about roadway safety by speaking with families and families having conversations with your children about this recent tragedy. This is, this is real and it's impacting a lot of people who we know. And if we can all work together, we can keep all of our students and everyone in our community safe. I want to highlight and thank the Westmore Oaks PTO for inviting me to their meeting last week. It always brings me great joy to hear directly from our families, their experiences in our schools and their insights on what is working well at their schools and what their needs are. And that really is the purpose for me going out and talking to schools because each school is unique and each school community has something that they want to focus on. So really appreciate that. I want to share my appreciation to our longtime Westmore Oaks PTSA president, Amanda Pulaski, whose tireless service and countless hours of volunteering have been invaluable to the school community. She has kept the PTSA momentum moving forward for over eight years, but has recently decided to step down in that role. So on behalf of the WUSD family, we thank Amanda for all of her support at Westmore Oaks. And we're looking forward to supporting the parents and the administration at Westmore Oaks and continuing the work of their PTSA. You all know, we have a wonderful student advisory at all of the high schools. And so this week, my superintendent's advisory at River City came together for collaborative, engaging conversation about how to strengthen school climate. Not only at River City High School, but district wide. And so we're working with our River City Advisory Group, our Yolo Advisory Group and our Washington Middle College Advisory Group to start with the same topic. And they're really coming together with some unique student led strategies of how to change the climate at their schools, K8 included. So more to come on that. It was good getting together for the Chamber, WSA Chamber of Commerce Installation Awards and Dinner and such a nice opportunity to engage not just with trustees, but with our business communities and highlighting so many who have done great work on behalf of WSA. So that was a wonderful opportunity. And lastly, I want to celebrate the continued efforts of our district leaders and our site leaders and our teachers for their work and collaboration with INCUS, our National Center for Urban School Transformation. So if you recall back in 2021, INCUS Equity and Excellence Audits examined how WUSD students in every demographic group experience schools' culture, schools' curriculum and classroom instruction. And through that audit process, the INCUS team has supported our leaders in better understanding how their schools, each school is similar or different from high performing schools that are part of INCUS research across the country. And so this has led to developing a series of recommendations. Each school has received a report that highlights things that are going well and things that could be improved. And our work this year is focused on implementing practices across the district that have been researched, found, research has shown, when you implement these practices, you will see that achievement level rise for our students. So this school year, all sites have had their INCUS Equity and Excellence Audit. And we have now three cohorts of groups of site leaders, district leaders who are meeting, talking, they're doing a book study on what are the teaching and leadership practices that have been shown across the country to provide success with students and students and demographics that are similar to Washington Unified. I think that's the key point. We have such a great teaching staff here. We have support from our classified, and so it really is about how can we get even better? And what are the practices that if we do them, we will see those results? So looking forward to continuing to give you updates on what we're finding through that process. So there's a lot of things happening behind the scenes in our schools and it really is what I feel my core responsibility and my core value is to keep us on track, is to keep us talking about what do our students need and making sure we deliver that promise of equity, excellence and empowerment for every student every day. And that takes a lot of conversation and that's what we're doing because our students deserve the best we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hildreth. Presti Wong.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Thank you for that, Dr. Hildreth. And I think, I mean, I was excited to hear that IBB, the first meeting using IBB was successful because I know that both Presti Pizzati and I attended that, so that's really promising to hear. And so grateful for that time and investment from our labor partners as well as the board to make that happen. There isn't a lot since we, I mean, since we met last month, or we met last week. But in any case, I'm tired. I have a 6:00 AM flight. Did I not tell you this? In any case, just grateful for that, grateful for kind of, again, when you center it in students and families and community, which I've heard loud and clear that both of our labor partners are about. Let's begin with that in mind and have those conversations, really just grateful and gratitude to hear that, that that's a really great way to kick off the year. I also am excited that the State Superintendent of Public Instruction reached out to ask for a student band to play at the Teacher of Year VIP reception on Monday. And I was proud to actually recommend our syncopating sea monkeys who will be playing, I think, am I out of turn? They are. And thank you Felicia, to Felicia and Principal Billingsley for making that happen. Just really love it when we're able to uplift when somebody reaches out all of our programs, you know, related to students. So just thank you, thank you, thank you for being able to partner with the Department of Education and Superintendent Tony Thurman to honor our Teachers of the Year. So we're really grateful for that. And with that, I don't have anything else.
Thanks, Sarah. Jeremy Gonzalez.
Thank you. We were together recently for a special board meeting. It wasn't a regular meeting, so I, we haven't had one since December. So I'm going to share a few business items. We did have our two by two agenda on January 10th. One of those pieces of that was the opportunity for the grant with Bright Park. The city presented an opportunity. There was a pretty tight timeline on that, so this board knows that given our time constraints, we needed to have a special board meeting. So we have done that in closed session in our last special, you might have seen it on the agenda. And then moving forward, we'll, we'll see where that goes in terms of their timeline and discussions. But they are also doing their community meetings. I believe that President Coffey attended their recent one on Bright Park. As we know, that is currently, it is city owned property, sorry, district owned property. But we have an MOU with the city and they use it and they are fund the upgrades that they're doing there.
Okay, the other piece of that, we talked about the graduation venue. As we know, River City High School has worked for many, many months on securing our venue for graduation and it was not able to be this year at the Rivercat Stadium because of games conflicting. And we talked to the city about, you know, we have our labor partners that are not on contract when the summer comes and we're not going to bring them all back in the summer to try to do a graduation. So we have to, we have some restraints of needing to one, have grades done, so we know how our students are doing. And then of course, also have our employees here to run that. So it'll be at a different location. We talked about in the future if there's ways that they can help us get those dates secured. We'd love their help in that as well. And then I was very grateful to be able to get enough, many site visits. My time was limited, but I had a few days off and I used it getting to our virtual academy, River City High School, Stonegate, Bridgeway Island, Riverbank and Yolo. And I'll certainly get to the others as well. I'm not going to go into all of my visits on all of those schools. They're really special visits. I'll just share a theme. And we talked about INCUS at every school. They talked about their equity audit, the work that they're doing. And also I got to see and sit in many wellness centers and that really cool furniture that is in there now. And it was just a really, it's a really nice space, very welcoming, and there were a lot of great conversations there. There was one that was concerning and that was the facility pieces at Yolo High School. We know that Yolo High School has an aging facility. But then to be there and really see it up close on a day when the refrigerator was broken, freezer is broken, they're using the staff fridge for student food and trying to negotiate all of it. There was of course work being done to get that repaired, but it, it just speaks to an aging facility and concerns that we have. And then add to that, we know that we have staff members there who use a wheelchair, as any of our schools should always be open. Anytime somebody comes with, we need to be ADA compliant and we need to make sure that we have facilities that are in a space that can welcome all of our employees, all of our students, all of our guests and families. And so I just want to highlight that as we move forward and really bringing that back because I, I've been on that campus seeing it in those conversations at the time, it brought it back for me that it's time to have those discussions here too about how we can make some upgrades there. And then I appreciated, and I, oh, and with that, can we have an update on athletics at Yolo High School and the comments that were made tonight as well? And then I also wanted to speak to the piece of the joint committee looking at benefit possibilities. I think that sounds like a really exciting, great idea. I know that there's also negotiations happening, so I don't know what that looks like in terms of if that impacts it. But I think that the more that we can explore, and I think the idea of having a joint committee to look at options seems to be a really smart one because we know it's a, it's a huge concern. Huge concern. And with that, I want to thank all of our employees who, who just, all of the work that is done. I hope everyone was able to have some time over break to just kind of refresh as we come back and really have a really strong winter and spring with our kids. And thank you for all of our employees for all that you do every single day for our kids.
Thank you. President.
Yeah, thank you. I, I I just want to say thank you so much for agreeing to do the IBB program. That's I have a feeling that it is going to strengthen the relationship between WSTA and WUSD just in terms of trust overall and how we view each other because effectively at the core, you know, interest based bargaining defines shared values and really gets to the crux of what everybody wants, and that's what's best for kids, right? And this helps narrow that. And I'm a firm believer in it. I wish the state would use it. But I firmly believe that we have an opportunity to do something great. So I'm glad to hear that it's starting off very well. I was able to attend last week Bridgeway Island's principal coffee. And in doing so, I personally say it was the best principal coffee I'd ever seen. They had like roughly 20 or so parents there, which is a lot for an 8:15 in the morning principal coffee. Like that's insane numbers. Usually there's like three or four people that show up. So having 20 or so people there was, I was impressed. But we did get to go over some numbers that were being presented, some you know, interesting things that that parents didn't really have a chance to see up until this point, I think, is the wellness centers. And I've been not able to actually take a tour of the wellness center until the principal coffee. And so I did get to go to the wellness center and it does seem like a very well, just a very soothing place to be. The chairs, the, I think they're called zero gravity chairs. I did, and I fell completely backward and I thought, oh my God, I'm going to fall. But in reality, no, it was pretty cool. But one thing that I didn't really pay attention to was the fact that my daughter goes there almost every day that it's open. And she didn't tell me about this. And she says, I love the wellness center. And it was only until I told her, hey, I got to go to the wellness center. She goes, oh yeah, I go there almost every Tuesday and Wednesday. And I was, really? Like, yeah, I love it. It's quiet, it's peaceful. I can play board games, I can do puzzles, I can do my homework. I can get help from Ms. Ruth if I needed on something. Great, thank you. That makes me great. It makes me feel great about like, okay, this is something that we've done that is helping. And it just made me feel really. Also, I had a chance to meet with Dr. Solis today. I did just a little stop in to say hello, see how he's doing. And I asked, you know, how are things going? He goes, you know what? They're remarkably going well. Like for as much as we talk about social and emotional, that was our focus last year. Now focusing on rigor and standards is, you know, kind of where we're at this year. And he said, and I just wanted to throw this compliment out to you, Audrey, that he highlighted you and the work that you're doing. And he said that you're a saint and, you know, and he can't thank you enough for the help that you've provided, especially focusing us on our standards. Yeah, no problem. I definitely wanted to make sure that credit was given when, when I heard it. When I asked him, you know, what is it that you need? And he said, I need to take care of that field back behind. And so I know we've had conversations about that and I've seen the field, but I would recommend that everybody, if they haven't already, go take a tour of the field. It may look different now because it's green, but it's different when it's not, right? So when summer rolls around, that looks like, you know, a dust trap for everyone. And it's not, it's, you know, it's something that we need to invest in and we need to take care of it some. So I just would, you know, like to say that needs to be on our priority list as soon as. To Sarah's point, I was very shocked to hear something brought up about Yolo ending their PE program. I didn't know that that rumor was out there. Can we at least crack down that rumor and find out, find out what that's about? Also, I would like to thank WSTA for sharing the sharing the information about the benefits. I didn't realize quite how bad the increase was. You know, I know that I know that during COVID, healthcare providers were prohibited from basically bouncing up their premiums, exorbitant amounts. So now they're getting their pound of flesh, right? Now that the pandemic is over, they're finding ways to increase. I know my, my I know my, my personal Kaiser HMO has gone up 13%. So that's out of my pocket, right? Like that is something that I feel. So I understand when it's when it's being presented to us as a real hit. And I also understand that the 4% loss of off schedule. They, you call it off schedule, I call it one time compensation, right? It's one time compensation and it's going away. And I do understand how that can feel like a double whammy. But I do think there's things that we can do and I that I, I believe that both, both bargaining units and Monique can probably get creative about finding ways to make sure that the, you know, the pain isn't as dire as it, it looks like. With that.
All right, thank you. So I just wanted to say, yeah, it was a shock to me as well. Yolo PE. To me, it's not going anywhere. And yeah, I'm like, I'm already feeling like it's not true, but let's just make sure that let's confirm it and let's, let's nip that rumor out. And real quick too. Especially I'm like, how are we going to get rid of P after we've spent some time on this wall? Dang it. I'm like, handball wall. Right, right. So there's that too. So, so yeah, so I'm glad about that. I did go to the Bright Park meeting that they had for the community. The reason why I'm bringing it up is that is our property and the plan at this time doesn't take into account the students at Riverbank using the land. So currently right now, if you're not aware, PE, kids use the track to run and do their standardized testing for for PE. They use the field areas to do outdoor play for PE. There's a lot of things that Riverbank does at that park for their physical education. And there is also Westfield or not Westfield, there's also a west Club West that's in the corner. And they use that area as well for the kids to get some outdoor play. So I'm just letting you guys know that the plan does not incorporate at this time, the use of our students at Riverbank. So if it was solely city property, I get it. We have no say, but we do. And so just making sure that that is brought up. All right. So other than that, healthcare benefits, yes, I see it. I'm a visual person, so that was perfect for me, seeing the increase and what's coming out. And that was just for one. And I'm like, and I got I'm the family one. And I'm like, I went straight to that one. I was like, oh my gosh. It's, you'd think it'd be a little bit more like, yeah, no. Anyway, I, I get it. I'm hoping we can get creative. Monique, so I am think, I am, I'm very hopeful. And then I know it's on the agenda as far as like what's coming up, but the subcommittee curriculum, January 30th and the budget, budget session, January 31st. I'm on both of those or I'm not on both of them, going to both of those. Yes. So yeah, so that's all I have to say. Happy New Year. And I will not be here. I know, I'm just like, I will not be here at the next meeting. It's already been predetermined before I became president. So just so y'all know, the next regular. But I am a trustee, that's why I said I will not be here. So that way it was already. So as for the next future board agenda items, curriculum subcommittee, January 30th and board budget session, study session, January 31st. And then update on Washington Unified Virtual Academy, Academy to be determined and second interim budget report in March 2024. Anything else? Nope.
I do.
Oh.
Sorry, I'm listening. I just wanted to ask, and this could be a, maybe a staff update, is for the use of our COVID dollars. I know we have it all in our budget. We have all that money. It's just putting it in a document. So if we could get an update on the COVID dollars and how they were spent. I know we have it all, but if it's in one place, so it's easy to share. That would be helpful. So we can make sure to get that out when we're asked for community members. And then we had talked about having a time. I know we have a lot of meetings coming up, so maybe this could be done during the handbooks time when we're working on that. But thinking about the setting of the agenda in terms of what is on consent, what's on action, making sure that we, we all know and are on the same page. Which is also very clear for Dr. Hildreth and all of our staff too. I think that would be important pieces to talk about. And so maybe it could be done in there with all of the, yep.
Okay. And then on that note, we are adjourned.